Adrianne Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Monday, August 4th, 2025, at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for August 4th, 2025. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input on the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and livestream and post it on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for the session as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councilmembers Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
And assistance to the Attorney Lehman.
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Kavanaugh, I will turn it over to you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Adrian. I invite all who are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before moving on, I will just note on our agenda, there is an error in the roll call order for the meeting where Councilmember Sprank is accidentally listed twice instead of Councilmember Russell. So when we do the roll call order, Councilmember Russell will be called in where the second Sprank is listed. And with that, we'll move on to our consent items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration, and consent items can be found on pages 1 through 4 of the agenda.
All right, thank you, Adrian. Good evening, everyone. Is there any of the consent items that anyone would like to hold for separate discussion this evening? Seeing no one here. Anyone virtually?
No.
All right, thank you. Okay, then I do need to hold number 14, please. I'll just keep that one noted. Mr. Jones.
I'd like to hold number 9.
Number 14, number 9. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended, except for number 9 and number 14.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Resnick, second by Farber. Adrian, just call the roll, please.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0. Let's begin with number 9. So let's get a motion here to put this on the table, please, and then we'll go to you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones?
I'll move that we receive and file and approve number 9.
I can second that.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Sprank. Mr. Jones?
The comment I just wanted to make is it's good to have them back. We lost our auxiliary police for quite a while for a number of reasons, but JJ says we've got about 30-ish people that are involved here. This is just motioned just to provide them some funds for liability insurance, which is a good thing to have. What a difference this will make for long-term police operations. We need long-term traffic control for big community events like parades. Good going. Glad they have you folks back in the fall. So I move approval.
All right, thanks, Mr. Jones. Any other comments on this one? All right, okay. Motion here is to receive and file and approve, so Adrian, just call the roll, please.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0. Next up is number 14, contracted services agreement with Crescent Community Health Center, so I'd entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Move to receive and file and dispose of as recommended.
Second by Wethel.
All right. Got a motion by Jones, second by Wethel, and that recommendation and noted in that is to approve, just to make sure we point that out. The only reason I'm holding this is because my wife, Jennifer, is employed by Crescent Community Health Center, and when there are direct funds being given to Crescent, I like to abstain from those votes, even though I'm not technically getting any financial benefit from it, I just think it's most appropriate to do so. So I would like to abstain from this vote, please. All right, no further comments. Adrian, just call the roll, please.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion passes 6 with 6 yeses and 1 abstention.
Next are items set for public hearing. We have 3. First is Water System Improvements 2024 North English Road Water Main Extension Project. Adjusted public hearing date for August 18th, 2025. Second is Resolution of Necessity for the Amendment of the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District Urban Renewal Plan, version 2025.3, for September 2nd, 2025.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file, adopt the resolutions, and set the public hearings for the dates specified.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Russell and a second by Wethel. Adrian, just call the roll, please.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
Next are Boards and Commissions. We have application review for the Building Code Advisory and Appeal Board and the Civil Service Commission and the Housing Commission, and appointment to the Transit Advisory Board.
Okay, so our first application review here is for the Building Code Advisory and Appeal Board. We have 1 three-year term that runs through January of 2027, and we have 1 applicant, Nathan Wardle. Do we have anyone here to address us on this application, please? Yes, please come on up. Just a reminder for everybody, just a name and address for the record, please, when you get to the podium. Yeah, thank you.
My name is Nathan Wardle. My home address is 2725 Pleasant View Drive, Apartment 202, Dubuque, Iowa. So I'm a local architectural designer at FEH Design on Main Street. I have a bachelor's degree of architecture from Iowa State University, where I also received a minor in historic preservation. And in my time since employment graduation in 2024, I have worked in eastern Iowa on many types of projects, specifically in education and library sector, as well as other occupancies with state and local governments, particularly Missouri. And then as one of the major parts of my career so far has been building documentation codes, and then following the International Building Code and Fire Safety Code for multiple properties, including existing buildings and new construction.
All right, well, thank you, Nathan, for your comments. Any others on this application? All right, hearing none, we can move on. We have the Civil Service Commission. Just to note, there's a, this is a bit of a change in Iowa code, so I'm going to read this, just so everybody's aware of this, because I think it's good to just read it out loud, but the Iowa Code 400.1 requires publication of the names of persons selected for appointment by the mayor of the Civil Service Commission no less than 30 days prior to a vote by the City Council. So the mayoral selection of appointments will occur at the August 18th, 2025 meeting, so I will make my selections after this, after this meeting for the next meeting, and then the City Council meeting with the vote on the appointments will occur at the October 6th, 2025 meeting. So this board, or this commission has actually expanded membership, so we now have more members that are available to be on this commission, which is the reason we have multiple different applicants here. So, did I get all that right?
Mm-hmm.
Hey, what do you know? All right, so Civil Service Commission here, we have applicants. We have 2 four-year terms through April 6th, 2027. Our first applicant is Julie Bakkenstedt. Do we have anyone here to address us on this application?
And Ms. Bakkenstedt did submit written input.
All right, thank you, Adrian. All right, then I'll move on to our next applicant, who is Otto Kruger. Do we have anyone here to address us on this application?
Lot of familiar faces here tonight. Good evening. My name is Otto Kruger. I live on 2521 Wheatland Drive here in Dubuque. Thank you, Mayor Kavanaugh, and the City Council for reviewing my application for the Civil Service Commission. I hold a bachelor's degree in music performance and also a master's degree in public administration with emphasis on city government. I am a retired 20-year Air Force officer, and I came back to Dubuque and have served the Dubuque community in many fashions. Some of the highlights include 8 years on the school board, along with being the president of the school board for a year. I was on the Long Range Planning Commission, the Historic Preservation Commission, and also the Civil Service Commission. My last 7 years, I have found me and my wife doing some retirement traveling, so I find myself with extra time once again to serve our community, and so again, I thank you for reviewing my application for the position of Civil Service Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Otto, for your comments. Any others on this application? All right, next application is Barbara Liski. Do we have anyone here to address us on this application? Seeing no one, and I should always ask for anything virtually, just let me know if there is anything. Thank you, Adrian. All right, Randall Ludwitz, or Ludwitz, if I got that right. Ludwitz, I was right the first time, should have just stuck with it. Thank you very much, Randall.
Randall Ludwitz, I live at 867 Barberly Drive. I worked for the city of Dubuque for part-time and full-time, 36 years total. Took a lot of civil service tests, was a union steward for 25 years, and spent a lot of time with civil service on disciplinary actions and grievances and stuff like that. And when I saw the applicant, or that there was a opening, I thought I would apply and see what happens.
All right, well, thank you very much, Randall, for your comments. Any others on this one? All right, couple more here. We have Brian Nieses is the next applicant. Do we have any comments on this application? Seeing no one. Then our final applicant is Darcy Van Ostrand. Anyone here to address us on this application? Okay, all right then, the final review is for the Housing Commission, so here we have 2 three-year terms through August 17th, 2028, and 2 applicants. Rick Baumover is our first. Do we have anyone here to address us on this application?
And Mr. Baumover did submit written input.
All right, thank you, Adrian. All right, and then finally, Rick Murfeld is the final one. Anyone to address us on this application? Okay, all right then, we can move on to the Boards and Commission appointments, and here we have 1 appointment for the Transit Advisory Board. This is 1 three-year term through July 30th, 2027, and 1 applicant, Katie Bailey, so I will entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to appoint Katie Bailey to the Transit Advisory Board.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Russell, second by Wethel. Adrian, just call the roll, please.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0. So Katie Bailey is appointed to the Transit Advisory Board through 2027.
We'll move on to public hearings. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input for the public hearing you would like to speak to and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state your question, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Public hearing number 1 is Auburn-Custerne Utility and Roadway Reconstruction Project.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. Jason, coming to you, and I'll come to you after the, after public input, so thank you, Ms. Farber. Okay, go ahead, Jason.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Assistant City Attorney Jason Lehman, I am reading the city manager's memo. City Engineer Gus Sahoyas is recommending City Council approve the plan specifications and form of contract and estimated cost of $1,617,162.80 for the Auburn-Custerne Utility Roadway Reconstruction Project through the adoption of the attached resolution. The project provides for the removal and replacement of approximately 1,480 linear feet of 6-inch diameter vitrified clay sanitary sewer, approximately 1,000 linear feet of various-sized water main, approximately 360 linear feet of various-sized storm sewer, and the installation of approximately 1,800 feet of drain tile, and the repaving of Auburn Street and Custer Street between University and Loris and North Grandview and Atlantic. The project is located in Consent Decrease Sewer Shed 11. The city manager concurs with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Jason. We are in a public hearing to consider City Council approve the plan specification form of contract and estimated costs of, for the Auburn-Custerne Utility and Roadway Reconstruction Project. Do we have any members of the public to address us on this item this evening? Seeing no one here, nothing virtually?
No one virtually.
Okay, back to us, Ms. Farber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just want to announce that I will not be participating in any discussion or the vote, because I do own property that would be affected by this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farber. Any further discussion, questions? Seeing none, hearing none. Motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, just call the roll, please.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion passes 6 ayes, 1 abstention.
Public hearing number 2 is North Schmidt Island Collection System Project. Contract number 1, contracting services, public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Russell, second by Sprank. Jason, please.
Thank you. Jason Lehman, Assistant City Attorney, reading the city manager's memo. City Engineer Gus Sahoyas is recommending City Council approve the plan specifications form of contract and construction estimate of $200,000 for the North Schmidt Island Collection System Project, Contract 1. The small portion of sewer replacements will be bid as North Schmidt Island Collection System Project, Contract 1. This project provides for the installation of approximately 200 linear feet of sanitary sewer in the area located immediately adjacent to the Key Hotel Expansion Project on the north half of Chaplain Schmidt Island. The contractor will be awarded an incentive of $1,000 per calendar day for each day the project is completed before the final completion date of October 1, 2025, up to a maximum of 15 days, September 16th, 2025, or $15,000. City manager concurs with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Jason. We are in a public hearing to consider City Council approve the plan specification form of contract and construction estimate for the North Schmidt Island Collection System Project, Contract number 1. Do we have any public input on this item this evening? Seeing none?
Nothing virtually.
All right, back to us then for any discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
Yeah, thank you. Since Schmidt Island has had so much work done on it, this is clearly a necessity to continue to have the current development to continue forward, so I'm looking forward to this, that we need to do it, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sprank. Any others? All right, seeing none, hearing none. Motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, just call the roll, please.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
Public hearing number 3 is approving the lease agreement between the city of Dubuque and the Lamar Companies.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Wethel. Jason, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jason Lehman, Assistant City Attorney, reading the city manager's memo. City Engineer Gus Sahoyas is recommending City Council approval of the lease agreement by and between the city of Dubuque and the Lamar Companies for a billboard located at the north edge of the city-owned parking lot at 8th and White Street. The lease agreement between the city and the Lamar Companies has a 5-year term commencing on October 1, 2025, with an additional 5-year extension unless either party gives written notice of non-renewal 60 days prior to the end of the original term. Upon execution of this lease agreement, the annual rent commencing in October 1, 2025 will be $2,800 or 20% of the gross revenue from billboard advertising, whichever is greater. There is a CPI of 3% rent increase each year on the anniversary date. City manager concurs with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Jason. We are in a public hearing to consider the lease agreement by and between the city of Dubuque and the Lamar Companies for a billboard located at the north edge of the city-owned parking lot at 8th and White Street. Do we have any public input on this item? Seeing none, nothing virtually?
Nothing virtually.
All right, back to us then for any discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Resnick.
Yes, I understand the 20% of the, or the $2,800, but I don't understand, how do they determine the gross revenue from the billboard advertising? How do they know what the gross revenue is from billboard advertising?
Do we have anyone present who can answer that question? Gus, I hate to look in your direction, but I saw your name on the memo, so... Just to throw out a guess, that I think we're talking about the amount that's paid by the person or entity advertising, that would be my guess.
Gus Sahoyas, city engineer. I'm assuming it's exactly what's saying, they're taking the revenue that the sign generates every year, and 20% of that.
I mean, so you answered my question by saying that this is self-explanatory? I should be understanding this?
No, I'm just saying it's, what I would say, I never worked on the lease, but it came through our department, so whatever the sign generates per year, they'll tell us, Lamar will tell us what that is, and it'll be 20% of that.
Is it in sales? Is that what it?
Well, no. It's what the rental for their advertising on the sign.
So they sublet this, and they, they say, okay, they get people to advertise on it, and they get paid for that?
They get paid for that, and then we...
That makes sense to me. I was just wondering if they're advertising something, and they sell a million dollars worth of their product, and you get 20% of that?
It's what they generate on the rental of the sign.
All right, that makes sense. Thank you for coming up and giving me that answer. Thank you.
Before you go anywhere, Gus, I'm going to have a question for you, too. And it might be a legal one, too, but I mean, is this a standard agreement? You know, this is, we've never seen something like billboard leasing, that kind of thing on here. Is this fairly in line with what the county was getting, or is this pretty standard?
I'm sure it's almost identical.
Okay. Jason, do you have a sense of that?
I don't have much of a sense, other than that it does appear to be in line with what we've done before.
Okay. Thank you, Gus. Any other questions? Okay, all right. Motion here is to receive and file and, oops, adopt the resolution, so Adrian, just call the roll, please.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
Next is public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the City Council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the City Council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to 5 minutes, and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the City Council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to the action items on the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. Any public input this evening?
Clark Slows, 2925 Burlington Street. I'm kind of here to speak on the wage compression issue, number 2 on the agenda, and I sent an email about it, and I was kind of rough on 3 people, and I will apologize for that. I had 3 questions, I got good answers to them. Not kind of, you know, I'm not arguing about the amount of the increase, it's just how should we say, the timing and how it came, came forward, because if this would have happened, you know, when I was working for the county, I would have been called on the carpet for that. The only, I got 2 other questions, is since this is going to be a change to the budget, is there going to be a corresponding decrease in some item in the police department budget or in the overall budget? And my next question is, since this is a change in the budget, does it require a public hearing? And that's all I got.
All right, thank you, Clark, for your comments. Any other public input this evening? Seeing and hearing none, anything virtually?
Nothing virtually.
All right, last call. We can move on to action items, please.
Action item number 1 is rebid 2025 repair and maintenance of the Iowa Street Parking Garage, Recommendation of Award Tequila Restoration Services LLC.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Sprank.
Thank you.
2025 repair and maintenance of the Iowa Street Parking Garage, Tequila Restoration Services LLC of St. Louis, Missouri, in the amount of $3,405,758, plus alternatives in the amount of $605,172.50. City manager concurs with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Jason. New discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
Is there someone here that could answer a question for me about the structure? Thank you. So I noticed in the staff memo that you had listed all of the repairs and maintenance, the slab, ungrab, the joists, the ramps, the beans, et cetera. But most importantly, there were some electrical upgrades that were listed also. And I just have a question about is there going to be lighting within the staircase or in the stairwells for safety?
I'm Jim Boosley, Project Manager in the Engineering Department. Yes, though the fixtures will be, if they're not there, they'll be added. And the existing fixtures within the parking structure also will will be updated to LED lights, more energy efficient, so yes.
Okay, thank you. That was a question we had chatted about previously to to this being created, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Sprank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, the memo that we got from the city manager didn't explain what was all entailed in this repair. And as Ms. Farber mentioned, there is a much longer discussion and it's a whole paragraph that we're going to be fixing to the facility nearly. And so I get why it's 3.4 million. I am very happy to see that there were multiple contractors this time, so whatever you guys did, thank you. But yeah, it's it's a lot of funds. It should be sooner or later, I do, I would like to eventually have a discussion as to at what point is it that we're going to be just throwing good money away? Like, should we start talking about potentially some of the even other older parking ramps, either taking them down, rebuilding them, repurposing them? So it's it's an issue that I'd like to eventually have, and I don't know how we can have that discussion. And this is not the evening for it, but it'd be something we'd like, I'd like to have sooner or later. Because do we know the status of like the TH one? Because that one's the one next to Telegraph Herald, that one's been fixed a lot over the years. And I know you can't really answer it right now, Jim.
Is it the Locust Street?
Yes, the Locust Street one, yeah.
Maintenance. And I think the easiest explanation is you have to maintain these facilities. And I think it's far more economical to maintain them, to either try to tear them down or rebuild them. So that's why we look at these options. And there's been some studies done that I think would be good to sit down and go over with you folks if you wish to do that. It would probably help answer a lot of questions about parking ramps.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Yeah, Ms. Wethel.
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to make a statement for folks about kind of my thoughts on this, so I won't put you on the on the button here. It's a significant amount of money to reinvest in our parking ramps, no question. We're in a situation where we are having one of the first medical schools in the Midwest to be built in many years in our downtown. It's an exciting time to be downtown, but it's time to maintain what we have to accommodate those individuals. And so it's not my job to look backwards and say, woulda, coulda, shoulda. That doesn't really do us much good at this point. However, I will say, moving forward, I feel very called to the maintenance of these structures to ensure that we aren't putting forward cost in the future that we otherwise could have prevented. There's a number of things on our agenda tonight that we're looking forward and saying this is a way that we can manage our assets of what we have, reinforce them and utilize them. So I appreciate your team's work on the process. I know it's been a big one. And thanks for the opportunity to speak on it.
Mr. Jones.
I'll just remind the council, too, that we had a conversation recently that kind of reached the conclusion that deferred maintenance is debt. And it's more a perilous debt than borrowing money to fix things by far. So of course, this needs to be repaired. It's a it's an important, well-used piece of infrastructure downtown and downtown's about to see a renaissance like it's not seen in decades with the University of Dubuque Medical, Butler Medical College coming downtown. So and I appreciate your words, sir. And I really appreciate your demeanor. One of the reasons that things work so well in engineering is that kind people who smile at you are answering the questions, solving the problems. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Jones. Others. You know, just kind of on this note, Jim, and I think this kind of goes for the Transportation Director Ryan Nucky as well, to we have a number of opportunities coming up, I think, to talk about parking, just in general. And I think it would be a good way to to have more of a public discussion about what that parking means going forward and what it's going to look like. What are the impacts of the medical school going to be? What are the impacts of new technology going to be? What are the impacts of the changes on how we how we do parking? Because there's been discussion about making it so we incentivize ramp parking more than street parking, all these things. I think we're going to have some opportunities to do that coming up. And then, you know, from an engineering side of things, being able to talk about in in good hard numbers, what is deferred maintenance? How much does that cost us versus taking care of it now? I think those are good discussions to continue to have, and I do think it's, you know, it's clearly something that's being talked about just in general.
We do have that information, the studies that were done. I've learned a lot in the last seven months, too. Amazing how much, you know, you need to absorb with regards to one department. But there is an effort, a very strong effort to to look at the maintenance and do a good job of of addressing what needs to be done in a cost-effective way. So I think there's some really good judgment, good engineering that's going into these projects and and the dollars that are being spent. I think you what you saw and what we did, taking a step back, eight bidders we received and it was well below the estimate and we could do all the alternates. Those are good things. And the firm or the contractor that bid this and was low bid is from St. Louis, very excited to come to Dubuque and work. So, yeah.
All positives. Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Any further questions or discussion on this? All right, well, thank you, Jim. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Motion here is to receive and file and adopt this resolution. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Fresnik.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
A motion passed at seven zero.
Action item number two is FY 2026 Police Supervisor Wage Compression.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file and approve.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. Jason, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Assistant City Attorney Jason Lehman, reading the city manager's memo. As city council has approved in the past to avoid wage compression between bargaining unit positions and non-bargaining command staff, Chief of Police Jeremy Jensen is recommending a pay increase for non-bargaining command staff. City manager concurs with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Jason. All right. Chief, you can come on up. I have a feeling there's going to be questions, so I see you sitting back there. You might as well. I know I have one at least, so, but I'll let others go first. Yeah, Mr. Fresnik.
Thank you very much. So after extensive study and a detailed implementation, FY 26 Wage Plan, which comp and class parity is is having a hiccup here and there may be others. My big question is, so what happened? I mean, you're, I was hoping Shelley Stickford would be here or somebody from HR, but I read what you wrote, chief, so I understand your point of view. But broadly speaking, could you tell me why this wasn't recommended when we passed the budget?
I have no idea to start with.
So, Mr. Mayor, this is this is City Manager Mike Van Milligan.
Yeah, Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. And so, yeah, Jeremy would would not really been part of that. So I have to admit, we were focused on the budget process through the pay and class implementation process. And I'll be candid with you, I missed this. So we had come to the council a few years ago and talked to the city council about the fact that we had a system at the police department where the pay differential between a a non-union supervisor and a a union supervisor, which is corporals, was not enough to entice employees to want to seek promotion. Now, there were some, but there were many who wouldn't. And and the reason makes a lot of sense. You know, if you're a longtime city employee and you're in the union and you have, you're working the day shift and you have Saturday, Sunday and Mondays off, and you say, okay, now I could seek promotion to lieutenant, but if I do that, I'm going to be working the midnight shift and I'm going to have Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursdays off, and I'm probably going to do that for a couple of years. And it's really going to disrupt my family life and, you know, and it's just not as good a time to work. And so when you combine that with the idea that there was not much pay differential between those positions, so the council approved several years ago, the idea that we would try and keep the differential what we increased it to a few years ago. Now, what I missed is, and it's not Jeremy's fault or anybody else's, was that when the union contract was approved, now this is the second year of implementation, there was this differential that more senior employees in the union received higher wages than less senior employees in the union. And so it started to create that compression again between those pays. And when Jeremy recently pointed this out to me, I said, well, then we're going to go to the city council and follow through with the policy that they already agreed to. I understand that I should have done it through the budget process, but I didn't. And so, you know, that's on me. I wish I had. Like I said, we were over-concentrated on the pay and class study implementation and I missed this one. So, but I I it's consistent with past approvals by the city council.
Well, thank you for that. I would recommend to the council, though, that we can, we treat this as a one-year pilot program because I I'm predicting there will be other glitches that we find out. And I don't want the compression to just mean another reason to raise salaries. I mean, we have to look at it in in other ways, perhaps, too. I mean, our citizens are expressing some compression right now as well. So I understand. I mean, is this not baked in in some of the hiring? I looked over the, what, in 2021, when we were looking for a new chief of police, and I'm glad you're here and you're doing a great job, but part of the qualifications is supervisory experience. It says right there, you're going to be a supervisor and it's an elevated salary. It is a good job. Now, not everybody wants certain jobs. I was a teacher and I would not want to be a principal if it was double the money. Some people just don't want to be lieutenants. Some people do. Is money part of it? Well, yes. I think we need to really consider this before we do this, make this change, and then maybe in two months we'll have another change. Anyway, just something to consider there. Also, let's get some quick questions here. The source of the funding, Mr. Van Milligan, what's the source of this funding, then?
Yes, so, you know, we've had a challenge ever since the pandemic in recruiting police officers, and we pretty consistently had about 15 vacancies. And so right now, I think we've got a list where we're hoping to hire seven or eight off that list. But even if we do, that still will lead seven, seven or eight vacancies. So that's where the source of funding is going to come from for these positions, that those vacancies far exceed the value of this of this salary change.
Okay, thank you. And there was a question from the public about is a public hearing required, Mr. City Attorney?
No, no, it would not be since this is, the money has already been allocated.
Assistant City Attorney, all right. Well, it hasn't been allocated specifically.
It has been, it is not changing from this. No. The the money has been allocated to the police department, but it has not been allocated for that specific, those specific positions. But since the money is not going, we're not going to be changing amounts, that we are going to be taxing folks or assessments or changing from department to department, we are good without a public hearing on this.
All right, thank you. In the excellent Telegraph Herald article, they mentioned one situation that if you had some officers who were, had a lot of overtime, it would overtake one of the salaried positions. And another thought would be, well, maybe we should limit overtime for certain people and spread it around a little bit. And I know that we, Mr. Van Milligan, just mentioned we need some officers. So, but I mean, maybe that's another way to look at it if if somebody says, well, I don't want so-and-so to outearn me because I have an elevated position over that person. You know, I just think there's more ways to look at it, and I think there, we're going to have the, again, if we think about this as a one-year pilot program, I support the FY 26 Wage Plan with tweaks, but we don't know what those are going to be yet. I appreciate, chief, that you brought up this first one. It's it's an important one, but I don't think it will be the last one that we have to deal with. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
As an organization, we've taken on a monumental task of trying to equalize, equitize and correct our pay scales across all ranks and all departments and all divisions. And we found that we've got some chewing yet to do in many departments. This is, this is an, we can't afford not to do this, in my view. We need young officers to want to advance. We need them to want to be lieutenants and captains and assistant chiefs and chiefs of the department. And that's, that's a very real obstacle that the city manager pointed out. If you're a corporal of a few years and you've got your your shift squared away and you've got your house squared away, for a very small pay increase, you can quit working days with weekends off and start working nights without weekends off. And by the way, the the people that you deal with in the middle of the night sometimes aren't as nice as the people that you deal with in the middle of the day. So you end up with a with a low seniority situation and a low seniority assignment. And a lieutenant, if the captain's off on a given night, a lieutenant may have responsibility for all of the law enforcement, the entire city of Dubuque. It's a big deal. It's a big bite. We also want our lieutenants and captains to stay. We want them to stay and retire in those ranks or higher ranks as as time goes on. We want them to get good at their jobs. We want them to get better at their jobs. We want them to stay at their jobs now that they're better. And Mr. Fresnik, right, we may have other issues in other departments that that were missed because of this enormous undertaking of fixing these wages. We have to, especially in a department that's distressed, that everybody depends on every day, we got to get it right. And we have to be competitive and comparable in all kinds of arenas. We lost three officers to State Patrol recently, last five, six years, five officers to State Patrol. We should look pretty hard at that. That's a good gig on the State Patrol, but why is it so much of a better gig than this? Lost an officer to Washington County Sheriff's Department. Now, any place can have bad crime, but I got a hunch that being a deputy in Washington County is probably boring. But the guy's got a take-home car, he's got some better hours and he's got better salary. And I don't know, maybe some family pressures. I don't know the whole story of if a wife or a girlfriend caused that movement. We can't afford to be leaking officers like that. We can't afford to be leaking these highly trained professionals to the private sector. We have to find a way to afford to make their jobs attractive and fair and equitable as we possibly can and by doing that, by correcting this. And I I appreciate that David understands the fragility of this of these steps. But what do you mean pilot project? Does that mean we we take the money back at the end of the year? Of course not. We have to pass this and approve it. So thank you, Jeremy. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Russell.
Thank you. Police and fire have always been a top priority and public safety has been a top priority for us here at this council. And I I don't think it's the fault of our police supervisors that this change has or this issue has come about. So I think it's important that we that we address this issue. I'm assuming, chief, that next year, when the budget presentation comes, these wages will already be incorporated so that we will be presented with a new budget next year that includes this kind of these these wages if we decide to go that route. Is that correct?
That is correct. We'll be watched very closely going into the budget next year.
Okay. So I guess my my last question would be, for this department and maybe for some other departments, how will we work to, and maybe you're not the right person to answer this question, but how will we work to monitor these compression issues in the future so that we can be a little more proactive as we might see them coming in the future? Is it perhaps that, as Mr. Jones said, we were just in the middle of that big process with the comp and study that we were doing and maybe it kind of got pushed aside? But I'd like us to make sure we move that forward so that we're all thinking about it in the future, so that we don't have to put you in this position going forward. We'll be looking at these kind of things regularly. Is that kind of your plan?
That is for the police department, for sure, yes.
Okay.
Mike, could I ask you to jump back in and answer Ms. Russell's question more with a more more global, like outside the police department, you know, looking at police and fire and any other departments? Is this something that we are going to be able to plan for better going forward?
Yes, so, you know, the mayor and council authorized the the comp and classification study. It gave us really good information, which we used in our negotiations of our five union contracts. And the council implemented that effective the first pay period in July or July 1st of this current fiscal year. And so I have a high level of confidence that we've had the information now that we need to fairly compensate our employees and and have a good retention and recruitment plan for all of our departments.
All right, thank you, Mike. Ms. Wethel.
I don't think I have a question necessarily, but just a comment in that being a public servant is an honor, but it is a sacrifice, and specifically for the Dubuque Police Department and the job that you do. Let's not forget that although we currently have 15 positions, I think you said.
16.
16. And hopefully, seven to eight will be filled, we hope, in the near future. We transitioned unfilled slots to our precision policing team to non-sworn individuals. And so my hope is eventually we can not only fill 16, but we can get support so that there is not the turnover and fatigue of a job that is a job that is demanding both on and off the clock. We need leadership to lead those people. And we need leadership that is strong in their ability to work through their own life experience. And if there's not a reason for those folks to stay engaged in a scale up, I get it. I get why they wouldn't want to do that. We know that we needed to bring compensation up. And if there is ever a time that I think we need to take a hard look at public safety and make sure that we are prepared for the decades to come, it is right now because the whole country is going through what we're going through. Dubuque is no exception, other than our crime rates are ultra-low compared to many other places in this country. And it is because of the teamwork that we do on this council, along with all of your team at Dubuque PD. So I am grateful and I'm happy to support this and will support it in the budget moving forward. Thank you.
Sorry, chief, I was a little hasty calling you up here. I didn't realize Mike was hanging out above us, able to answer some of these questions. So thank you for standing here and talking with us. Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, I'm with with everyone. This is, I don't think we have to think too hard to make this change. You know, we've done this before. We've been making these changes as we've we've approved these new contracts, specifically in police and fire, and we knew that there were going to be compression issues. It's not that surprising to me that we found one a little bit after the fact. I don't think this is an egregious misstep of any sort. I think that we need to be clear about that. This isn't something that somebody completely missed and we should, we should never be, you know, making a mistake like that. I can see how it did happen. I do. do appreciate that we now have a focus on the fact that we've made a mistake, and we need to focus on making sure that doesn't happen again going forward. I, I do hope that we can make this work in the budget process and have it be an annual discussion rather than something that we do in the middle of, of the year. But I want to point out to everybody who's, who's paying attention to this, we, we don't, this isn't entirely uncommon to make a mid-year change in some sort of, in some sort of staffing issue. There's another one on the agenda here tonight, too, that I believe was approved on the consent agenda, if I'm not mistaken. So, you know, there's, there's several things that we, that happen in, in a year. We realize that staffing needs to make some adjustments. And to say that we can't do that mid-year would just completely tie our hands behind our back in a way that would not be good for our community. So, I think we need to make sure that we recognize that it's, it's okay to do these things sometimes. It's good to recognize when the process could work better so that we can do it better next time. And I think that's all we're doing here. It, it doesn't, it absolutely needs to happen. And I'm definitely going to vote for this. And would vote for it again if it showed up again, you know, outside of the budget process, because I think we need to make sure that we're fixing this issue and making these adjustments as we need to go. But at the same time, we, we can do it a little better next time. And I think we're hearing it from you, from a police department standpoint. We're hearing it from Mike, from a city manager standpoint. And I think that we'll, we'll be seeing that. I, I have a high level of confidence that we'll see that in the year going forward. Well, Chief, thank you for hanging out with us. We appreciate that. And if there's any, no other further comments or discussion? All right. And Mike, thank you for your, for jumping in here, too. All right. Motion here on the table is to receive and file and approve. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
No.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion passes six to one.
Action item number three is 2027 and 2028 engine contracts.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and approve.
Second by Wethel.
A motion by Rousell, second by Wethel. Jason, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Assistant City Attorney Jason Lehman, reading the city manager's memo. Fire Chief Amy Scheller is recommending city council approval for the prepayment purchase of the two fire department engines in FY 2026 for an estimated delivery of August through December 2027 FY 2028. Seeking approval for early payment in FY 2026 and debt issuance in FY 2026 instead of FY 27 and 28. To avoid a three-quarter percent price increase, on August 1, 2025, the city manager has already executed the purchase agreement. Both engines have been budgeted through FY 2027 and FY 2028 CIP process and were debt-funded, abated by local option sales tax. The proposal is to prepay for both engines in FY 2026 for an estimated reduction of $180,642. City manager concurs with the recommendation and respectfully requests mayor and city council approval.
All right. Thank you, Jason. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
I'll go, Ms. Farber first, then.
From a budgetary point of view, I think it's very prudent to go ahead and prepay, as I think any of us personally would do if we had a, a big piece of equipment at our homes, for example, that we could prepay and get a deduction before installation. And I know that this takes several years to get this basically manufactured and delivered. So, I think it's a very prudent action. And as previously mentioned with the discussion on the police department, we have to also recognize that our number one priority, our second leg of the stool of, of, of our priority is the fire department for public safety. And this is preventative maintenance. And I think we can really appreciate the opportunity to have two new engines in the next few years. So, again, I just think it's very important and very good timing on the department head and on Mike's part to get this completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farber. Mr. Jones.
I was just going to say, I can remember when you could buy a whole fire engine for the savings that we're going to achieve by doing this. So, it is a significant chunk towards, you know, the next significant big purchase that has to happen. And I really appreciate that, that things are getting looked at this way. It's, it's a whole different world trying to buy things, big things, for cities and for public safety these days and for healthcare. The, the manufacturing processes are just, the supply chain is just not working. I read an article over the weekend about the enormous number of out-of-service apparatus that Chicago Fire is experiencing. And they just had some argument and just exactly what happened. But they had a piece of rail equipment that needed to be shut down and rebooted. They had a major fire with some loss of life in the last few weeks. That was a reserved piece. And then there's, this news story panned to the, the fire department shops. And it's like, a dozen aerial ladders sitting there, out of service, some of them for months because they can't get parts and can't fix them. There's a row of 15 or 20 pumpers sitting there, out of service for the same reasons. It's, it's just a mess. So, trying to be proactive and keep this equipment new, modern, safe, efficient, under warranty is a huge benefit for the citizens of Dubuque. And this one comes with little savings.
Thanks, Mr. Jones. Ms. Wethel.
Just want to say thank you, Chief, for you and your team for identifying a way to save money, to get the best equipment for your people, and bringing it to us. Thank you.
Any others? All right. Yeah, this is a, I, I have to agree. I mean, this is a great catch in the ability to be able to save money in this way. It also, you know, it comes with a little bit of, we're going to have to pre-plan now, a little bit around some, how we're going to manage debt and do those, those types of things. But if you can save money, why don't you just save money? It just seems like a, a great idea, even if you have to spend up a little bit more upfront to be able to do it. And I think that's just responsible and prudent and all the other words that we heard up here. So, thank you very much for that. Okay. Well, motion here is to receive and file and approve. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Action item number four is Central Avenue and White Street Corridor Design Phase One Consulting Engineering Services RFQ Authorization.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I motion that we receive and file and approve.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Sprank, second by Farber. Jason, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Assistant City Attorney Jason Lehman, reading the city manager's memo. City Engineer Gus Sahoyas is recommending city council authorization to release a request for qualifications to hire a consultant to assist with the design of Central Avenue and White Street Corridor Design Phase One. City manager concurs with the recommendation and respectfully requests mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Jason. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
Looking forward to approving this because this is the start of the entire process, that, something that we've been talking about since 2016-ish. So, I'm looking forward that this is moving forward. And yeah, I'll be approving it, of course.
Thank you, Mr. Sprank. Mr. Resnick.
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Sahoyas, please. And that is, I'm looking at this one and the next one, and I think one of the other ones we have, you know, this RFQ for services. And you, you need to select somebody on their qualifications, but there's no, there's no fee mentioned. That there's contract negotiations after you choose somebody. Is that how this is going to work as well?
Gus Sahoyas, city engineer, that's standard language for all engineering contracts. We really can't negotiate legally the price for the projects. We just negotiate it with them. So, I mean, it's just, it's not a bid process, just like you go to the doctor. It's not a bid. It's whatever the price is that they work on. So, it's a professional service agreement. And it's basically by the hour. They'll give us the scope of services, and they got to perform everything within that scope. But if it starts going outside the scope, we have to pay additional fees.
Okay. So, thank you. So, how do, I guess, how does that work, if you wouldn't mind talking about that? Because this next one, again, we'll talk about that later, but there's five different companies, and, you know, they're all reputable. And you select one. And then, what if that, what if you can't come to a, a contract negotiation? What if it's, do you go back and do it all again?
That's a great question. So, if you can't negotiate a fair price that you think it's fair, the city thinks it's fair, then we can go. And if we exhaust our possibilities, then we'll go to the second pick. So, that, that has happened before. If we can't negotiate a price that we think is fair for the project within the scope that we've come up with, then we'll go to the second candidate.
I see. So, these, all these people are rated, they're rated one through.
They're rated, and then we have to pick the, the top-rated one.
Right, sure.
And we, we attempt to negotiate. Usually, we're successful. But if we're not successful, then we'll go to the second qualified candidate.
Great. Well, thank you for that process information. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
This is budgeted dollars. You, you'll be looking for a negotiation within the parameters of budgeted dollars that you have available, right?
Correct.
Of course. Thank you.
Correct. Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion?
I agree. I'm looking forward to this process moving forward in this way, a conversation we've been having for a very long time already. So, this is great. Okay. Motion here is to receive and file and approve. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Action item number five is Old Mill Road Lift Station Phase Three Sanitary Interceptor Project, Catfish Creek Middle Fork Consulting Engineering Services RFQ Award.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Move to receive and file and approve.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Jones, second by Wethel. Jason, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Assistant City Attorney Jason Lehman, reading the city manager's memo. City Engineer Gus Sahoyas is recommending city council authorization to negotiate and execute with HDR Engineering for engineering services for the design of the Old Mill Lift Station Phase Three Sanitary Interceptor Project, Catfish Creek Middle Fork. The city manager concurs with the recommendation and respectfully requests mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Jason. Mr. Resnick.
All right, Mrs. Sahoyas, another question, please. So, I know they, they all filled in, they responded to the RFQ. Is there some kind of a, do you also come back to them to have a, an oral discussion? Or do you talk to these individual companies with, through their representatives at all? Is that part of the situation, do, or is it, is it just what's written on the, on the application?
No, we'll have a lengthy discussion once we go over all the scope. So, there, there could be several different iterations going back and forth with the scope and what we think is needed and what they think is needed to come up with a, a contract price for the project.
It's nice to have so many qualified people, isn't it? Because the names here are really highly respected. So, that, it's a tough challenge sometimes, I bet.
Yeah, the group that interviewed the candidates, they were very happy with the, the people that submitted for the projects.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you for that information as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
Gus, since you're still kind of up here, do you?
Yeah, don't run away, Gus.
Yeah, sorry, Gus. Kind of tying this one and the next one together. So, this is Phase Three, and then there's Phase Four, but it's a different group. Is there any concerns with that?
Not at all. Max O'Brien's here, too. He's the project engineer on the project. But as he explained to me, they're both very qualified. We just thought that the qualifications for one contractor, particularly the HDR consulting firm, has much more experience with railroad crossings. And that's pretty important for the project, the railroad. And the other consultant is very well-equipped with the environmental things that we think we're going to find on the South Fork. So, they decided to break it up, and they can both concentrate on both projects and move them forward quicker, quicker.
Thank you. That's all. Thank you. Yeah, that was my, my one question for you, too, Gus, while we're on that note, is I noticed, I just couldn't help but notice how similar the two memos were. They're very, very similar, this one and the next one coming up.
Correct.
The answer that you just gave is, I think, a really important one. There were some really specific reasons why the, the group that, the, the review committee, when you were looking at this, Max and everybody else on the review committee, that there were some very specific things in Phase Three that were different from Phase Four, and that's why two different companies. Plus, it sounds like the scope of work was going to be very big if you had one company doing both phases, and that was also a concern.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Jones.
Just to that point, on our landfill agency, we use HDR in fourth a lot, somewhat interchangeably. Oftentimes simultaneously, they don't fight. They work together to come up with solutions. They're both outstanding engineering companies. And thereto, we have a wealth of outside expert engineering firms at our disposal to help us find a way to the best possible answers. That's what's happening here, I'm sure.
Yeah. Thanks, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, Ms. Farber.
Yeah, one other note, just on the budget management, which I think is great because public safety, this is our number three. This is our third leg of our stool. That's important as we have this discussion tonight, is that it goes from fiscal year 26 all the way to fiscal 29, year 29, in terms of the expense of the development of the two lift stations. So, I think it's, it's very nicely spread out over time so that we can have effective budget and bond management on that as well. But no, great project. So, thank you for organizing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Gus, I think you're finally done. Yeah. All right. Well, motion here is to receive and file and approve. And we are on number five, even though we talked about five and six somewhat interchangeably there. But this is the Phase Three Sanitary Interceptor. So, Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Action item number six is Old Mill Road Lift Station Phase Four Sanitary Interceptor Project, Catfish Creek, South Fork Consulting Engineering Services RFQ Award.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I motion that we receive and file and approve.
Second.
Motion by Sprank, second by Wethel. Jason, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Assistant City Attorney Jason Lehman, reading the city manager's memo. City Engineer Gus Sahoyas is recommending city council authorization to negotiate and execute a contract with both infrastructure and environment for engineering services for the design of the Old Mill Road Lift Station Phase Four Sanitary Interceptor Project, Catfish Creek, South Fork. The specific scope of services will be negotiated. City manager concurs with the recommendation and respectfully requests mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Jason. Any further discussion that we already started in the last action item? Seeing and hearing none. All right. Motion here is to receive and file and approve.
Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number seven is Track Line Sanitary Sewer Reconstruction Project Consulting Engineering Services RFQ Authorization.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I motion that we receive and file and approve.
Second.
Motion by Sprank, second by Wethel. Jason, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Assistant City Attorney Jason Lehman, reading the city manager's memo. City Engineer Gus Sahoyas is recommending city council approval to release an RFQ to hire a consultant to assist with the development of the Track Line Sanitary Sewer Reconstruction Project. This project provides for the phased relocation of 5,150 feet of the 12-inch diameter sanitary sewer that runs along the railroad tracks from Hawthorne Street to Fangler Street. The existing clay tile sewer that was installed in the 1920s still functions. However, the influx of sand and proximity of the adjacent railroad tracks has increasingly made the sewer difficult to maintain and indicates that groundwater is infiltrating into the pipe. The sewer has multiple failing sections and is undersized from hydraulic modeling results. Proximity to the adjacent railroad prohibits access for maintenance or rehabilitation activities. The sewer requires relocation to the city right-of-way with redirection of private laterals. The project is located adjacent to Consent Decree Sewer Shed 10. The funding request will provide for the initial phase design permitting and easement acquisition for the relocation of the track sewer line located between Hawthorne Street and Roosevelt Street. City manager concurs with the recommendation and respectfully requests mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Jason. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I know that this is preliminary because this is an RFQ, so we're just looking for services. But when I was reading that whole memo, the other, the, the staff memo, we're, we're basically, we're putting out the timeline for this. This would take place, because if approved, if this is all approved, this would take place basically in 2027 and be completed in 2028. But I guess maybe Gus can answer this question. If we can't use the ground along the railroad, where would this go, then?
Gus Sahoyas, city engineer, so there'll be different things that the engineer will look at, different alignments. They might even look at a forest main system, depending on what they can come up with, to see if we can get those houses off the track line sewer. But the track line sewer is something that we've been fighting forever. It's a sewer that basically the railroad tracks are right over it. sewer that basically the railroad tracks are right over it. We cannot maintain it at all. We have to really coordinate even any minor efforts with the railroad company. It's a very tough project. We just have to move it out of that area. So that's what the consultant with our team, with Max's team, will look at, just try to find another place for that track line sewer in the same vicinity. Max has come up with a couple of different ideas with his team, and so they'll vet those two different, several different options and come up with the best solution for the city going forward with that track line sewer.
So Gus, I guess another follow-up question. Would this more affects the homes and not the businesses on Kerper? Or kind of a bit of both? Or you don't know?
It'll affect the houses to some degree because all those lines are coming off the hill, and we'll have to reroute them somehow. So we'll just have to determine what's the best place to put them. So there's a couple of creative ideas that they're coming up with, but we'll have to go through that whole RFQ processing and come up with the best solution.
Gotcha. So potentially more construction in the north end and point area.
More construction, more sanitary sewer work.
That's a good thing. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Sprank. Mr. Resnick.
Thank you. So you're really following through with that accelerated timeline for sewer construction. Is there a preview of coming attractions? Or are we on target so far? I know you had an aggressive schedule, and there's been a lot of rain, and so, you know, I don't know what would slow you down, but is everything going the way you had hoped?
So are we going back to the Old Mill and the South Fork and the Middle Fork? Is that what we're talking about?
Right, and everything that we did here today.
Yeah, it's pretty much on schedule. It might be a few weeks here or there, but we're out till the end of next year, so hopefully that goes, and they can catch up a little bit.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any other questions on this one? Discussion? Okay. Thank you, Gus. Appreciate it. All right. Motion here is to receive and file and approve. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
That's a seven zero.
Action item number eight is Request Additional FTE for Field Engineering Technician One or Two Engineering Water Resources Team.
Mr. Mayor. Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and approve.
Second.
Motion by Rousell. Second by Wethel. Jason, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Assistant City Attorney Jason Lehman reading the city manager's memo. City Engineer Gus Sahoyas is recommending the authorization of an additional full-time employee for Field Engineering Technician One or Two for the Engineering Water Resource Team within the Engineering Department, using budgeted CIP funds from several significant multi-year projects. Old Mill Lift Station Projects Phase One Lift Station Site, Phase Two Foreman, and Catfish Creek Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Project South Fork Phase Four and Middle Fork Phase Three. City manager concurs with the recommendation in respect for the request of mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Jason. Gus, I'm going to kick us off with a question for you right away. So this, it specifically says in here that this is a position that you're looking for based on several major projects over the next several years. My biggest question is, what happens after that? You know, is this a position that, I mean, do we see this position being required in the years past year three, past year four?
That's another good question, but I think looking forward, right now, let me go back. Right now, we don't have enough staff to watch those two major projects. So we feel that we can save two and a half, three times per hour, which, you know, if we're getting charged $125 an hour, we'll, a third of that. So looking forward to two and a half, three years worth of work ahead of us, we think there's some savings. We think there's a possibility that maybe somebody will retire in the meantime, and then this will be able to fill that gap. But as we look at some of these major projects that we have staff on to try to save the money for inspection, we just don't have enough people right now.
So I got two questions based on what you just said. So the, you, this is actually saving us some good money based on not having to pay consultant fees essentially to do this project management, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. All right. And this, I guess the second question goes back, and this is, I was mistaken earlier when I said that there was something on consent agenda. This was the position I was thinking of earlier. Going back to the earlier discussion about the police compression, why now? Why are we talking about this now rather than a few months ago during the budget process?
As we looked at different projects that we're watching, particularly the B Branch Pumping Station, we've dedicated one of the people that, or one of the staff that we could have on this job, but we thought, again, saving money on that job, which we feel that we're saving 300,000 or 400,000 over the course of, you know, two years by having our person watch it versus a consultant. So the person that we sort of had programmed for possibly this job went to that job. So we have several major projects going on now with the amphitheater, the B Branch Pumping Station, the Old Mill Pumping Station, these two major collector sewers. So we need a lot of staff to inspect those projects.
Sounds like we're having way too much fun.
We are having a lot of fun.
Yeah, that's good. A lot of good things happening. So, but in all seriousness, though, what I heard you say there, and you tell me if I caught this correctly, you had a plan, and as we moved forward and realized how the scope of these projects and what was required in managing those, you ended up moving some people around between, since we had the budget conversations and now. You've moved some staff around and realized that this is really going to be a savings and really necessary for us going forward. Is that what I heard correctly?
Exactly. This will be a savings going forward versus hiring a consultant to do the inspection. We could certainly hire a consultant to do the inspection. We feel this is more economical for the city.
Got it. All right. Thanks, Gus. Yeah, Ms. Wethel.
I just, this made me think about contracted services that we do through the city and unrelated to engineering, but how at a certain point, there's certain things that we can do cost-effectively within our city and certain things we cannot, that we have to contract people to do for us. So for instance, in the community, we have contracted services to do different community service work. However, in this case, we are going from spending $260,000 a year based on a 40-hour-a-week salary of $125 an hour to $87, because you identified that is a waste of taxpayer dollars when we could be employing someone full-time that would then be able to stay with our department, have tenure to move forward over years coming. And I think that there's so many projects on our horizon, I cannot imagine that with gradual attrition, this person would not have a position as you described. But I really appreciate that you bring this to us because I think it's important for department heads to look at things and say, it makes sense to do this, it doesn't make sense to do it now. So I just want to say thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing and hearing no other discussion on this one. Thank you, Gus, for the clarification. All right. Well, motion here is to receive and file and approve. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Action item number nine is Approval of Five Flag Civic Center Management Agreement, Amendment One.
Mr. Mayor. Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and approve.
Second by Wethel.
Got it. Motion by Rousell. Second by Wethel. Jason, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Assistant City Attorney Jason Lehman reading the city manager's memo. Interim Parks and Recreation Director Stephen Faisal is recommending city council approval of the Five Flag Civic Center Management Agreement Amendment One. City manager concurs with the recommendation in respect for the request of mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Jason. So I'm going to start right away. This one came to us really late. Can you walk us through, I think, I think we're going to need to spend some time on this just to make sure that we're all understanding exactly what's going on.
Absolutely.
Because it showed up on the agenda pretty late today, actually. So first of all, my first question is, how is that possible? Because I think we want to make sure we're doing things legally. So can you walk us through that, please?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. So Iowa Code Chapter 21, that discusses the notices that have to go out prior to council meetings. Normally, it is a 24-hour notice requirement. The same chapter includes a provision that states if it is impossible or impractical to get that notice out, then the, we can still add it to the agenda in less than 24 hours. We have to give as much notice as is practicable, and then we need to state in the minutes why it was not practicable to give that notice 24 hours in advance. What happened was, on late Friday afternoon, I got an email from OVG, that is the management company that we have hired to run Five Flags. I got an email from their deputy general counsel a little bit before 3 o'clock on Friday afternoon stating there was a problem with their liquor license application. The problem stemmed from the agreement, some language in the agreement, where we state that event revenue includes alcohol revenue. Or we don't so much state that, but we get, event revenue does include all of the alcohol. So it's all the money that comes in for the event. The city gets those funds up to a certain threshold, and then after that, the city gets 90%, OVG gets 10%. The trouble that the State Alcoholic Beverages Division identified when they were processing the application is that under those terms of the agreement, the city has more than a 10% interest in the alcohol revenue. If an entity has a 10% or more interest in alcohol revenue, they have to be listed as an owner on the liquor license application. When OVG submitted their application to the state, they did not include the city as an owner. My understanding is that through conversations between OVG and the state, that they were essentially told they could submit a new application which would list the city as an owner, but that would take one to three months to process. There is a show coming up later this week at the Five Flag Center for which liquor license is required. The other option was to amend the contract to carve out the alcohol revenue from the revenue that the city would be receiving. So that's what you're seeing in that very short amendment, is changing the language in the agreement so that the city gets 9.9% of the alcohol revenue, so right under that 10% threshold.
Right.
OVG gets the rest. Because this is different than what the financial terms were in the original agreement, this money will be held in escrow while we work to sort out any of the other details that need to be sorted out on the financial side. So this amendment is essentially intended as a Band-Aid to get us and OVG through this upcoming event and the next couple of months until we can get a broader, more detailed amendment put together and brought to you for consideration.
Thank you, first of all. That's very descriptive. How, did we have an agreement like this with the prior management company? Why did we hit this 10% mark, and why was that a problem all of a sudden? Did we not do this before?
We did have something before, and I don't know if it's just that the way that this agreement was worded, if that's what caught the state's attention, or if the state is enforcing things a little bit differently than they were before.
Okay.
Because we have had other things come up with Alcoholic Beverages Division questioning other things that prior occasions have not been questioned.
Okay. One more question, then I'll open it up for the rest of us. Can you, are you able to easily point us to the spot on the amendment that you put in front of us that needed to change? Because you said it changed from 10% to the 9.9%.
There is nothing in the original agreement that has a percentage like that, but in the amendment, it should be...
I think I saw it at the bottom of page one. Is that correct?
That sounds right.
New financial terms?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay. I'm reading, OVG shall retain 90.1% of all alcohol revenue resulting from the operation of the facility and shall remit the remaining 9.9% to owner.
There you go.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Discussion? Mr. Sprank, first.
Kind of follow-up, Jason. OVG already has a liquor license for the grant. Why can't their other facilities?
Their premise is specific.
Oh, okay.
That's the trouble.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Farber.
So I'm on page 103, so I can see where that notation is. On the revision and the interim activity, are you going to be looking for that 10% or another percentage over the next three months?
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
Okay, so whatever the timeframe is, is to get the renewed contract or agreement. We'll talk about the amendment. Is the number 9.9 going to be changing to what?
That should not be any higher than 10%, unless the city would be listed as an owner. And that's one of the other options that we need to discuss internally, is whether the city and OVG would be better off together if we were an owner listed that way, or if we keep our percentage under 10%.
But how does the DRA do it with the casinos? We own the casinos.
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. I mean, I would imagine it has to have something kind of similar in there where, I don't know.
I don't know about the EBD and the relationship to casino management either, but I'm just, there's two situations here where we have ownership, so maybe we could find out?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Jones, go ahead.
I think the difference is that the DRA leases the property from the city of Dubuque, and they are the de facto owner-operator of the business.
Oh, okay.
There you go, Ms. Jones. That is it. That is correct. Thank you.
I guess so.
Go ahead, Mr. Sprank.
So with the previous company that we had, how come that wasn't a problem then?
Unknown.
Okay, okay.
You have a newly discovered problem?
Yes.
Okay. So if, if I'm understanding correctly, just to summarize, this is a pretty simple, straightforward fix, and it just has to do with a .1 percentage that we need to make an adjustment temporarily to finish up, so to make sure that, I read here, this must be resolved by today in order, this is, I'm reading this from the memo, in order for us to procure alcohol for the first event on August 8th, which is understandable. So that needs to happen today in order to do this. But if we do this tonight and allow this to go forward, you're going back to the drawing board to make sure that this is all squared away and moving forward a permanent fix rather than a temporary one.
Correct, and that both parties get the same benefit of the bargain that we made in the beginning. We get this as close as we can to the original terms.
Yes, understood. Yeah, Ms. Farber.
One additional question. How do we do it with Grand River and with the other facility that they run?
Right. That I don't know either.
Well, maybe a little G2 would be helpful.
Sure.
Because, I mean, there's three entities here that we're talking about that we have a relationship with.
Yeah, on great.
That we own.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Resnick. And if there are any questions, you know, Ryan, I see you sitting over there. If there are any questions that you can answer as we ask them up here, feel free to let me know, and you can step up. I'm not calling you up right now, but if there are things that you think were Steve, you as well. Mr. Resnick, go ahead.
Yes, earlier this evening, we talked about compression, and here's a different kind of compression. And I appreciate OVG and our legal department doing this kind of work so quickly. We knew it was going to be, there were going to be issues. If there are small issues like this, that's great. I appreciate the extra time. Look at that, five, you know, Friday afternoon, late, and they're working, and we still got to get her done. We have OVG out here waiting. They can answer any questions. So I appreciate that, and I thoroughly understand the situation, and I appreciate all the work from the legal department and OVG. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Ryan, go ahead.
Yes, Ryan Bonifis, General Manager, Grand River Center and Five Flag Center. To Jason's point, you know, this is a lot of things that just came up within the last few days. Your question, Ms. Farber, is fair. We don't really quite understand where this came from. This permit was put, this request was put in by us two months ago. We were going down this road. Jason's been with us this whole time, and then we just hit this massive roadblock late last week. So we're trying to get this through. We do have the concert on August 8th, and that's our goal. And Jason's been great this whole time, saying, hey, let's get this done immediately so we can take care of our guests on Friday and then reopen this.
Thank you, Ryan. Yeah, I think, you know, my main questions are, I think, have been answered here. The first one was, are we doing this legally? And the answer is yes. So that's number one. And then, why are we doing this so late? I got the answer to that question, too. And I guess as far as, you know, the consequences of this, it's kind of a non-consequential issue moving it forward. I mean, it makes total sense to just say, yes, let's go ahead and do this while you continue to work out the details of other things. If you get a chance to just take some red tape that's just kind of thrown out there, to be thrown out there, and then be able to make some adjustments to it, I think that's good. And I'm sure that the Alcohol Beverage Division has their reasons for why this is happening, and maybe we can get some clarification on that, too, as we move this forward and be able to fix it permanently. But for right now, we can't stop the entertainment. We need to keep it going. Yeah, absolutely. Any others? Yeah, Ms. Rousell.
Just a question, I guess for our Assistant City Attorney. Will this Just a question, I guess for our assistant city attorney, will this come back to us then when they, when you have, when this is finalized in the new version, or does it just...
It will. There will be another amendment that will be brought before you for consideration within the next 90 days, is the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Any others? All right, Ryan, thanks for being here to give us more clarification on that. Jason, thank you for your explanations as well. All right, well, motion here is to receive and file and approve this. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Sprang?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Action item number 10 is Work Session Request Unified Development Code Update Technical Review Report.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move that the city council set a work session for the recommended date and time of August 27th at 6:30 PM for the presentation on U D C technical report.
Second.
Motion by Jones, second by Russell. Mr. Sprang?
Just a reminder, that is a Wednesday, so it's not a normal...
Yeah, yeah, it's a good reminder. Yeah, this one's coming up at a weird time.
It's a Wednesday, so it's different, it'll be a different meeting, and I'm assuming it'll be broadcast.
Yeah, but also a very important topic that we've been discussing for quite a while here, so. So I think that's why we need a little extra time for it that can't happen easily before a city council meeting. Right. Motion here is to receive and file and schedule that. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Sprang?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Action item number 11 is Work Session Request Report on Development and Outcomes of Serv'd Dubuque Program.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and set the work session for Monday, September 15th at 5:15 PM.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Resnick, second by Farber. This one is before a council meeting. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Sprang?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Action item number 12 is Work Session Request Imagine Dubuque Update.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and set the work session for September 15th at 5:45 to discuss Imagine Dubuque Update.
Second.
Motion by Russell, second by Resnick. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Sprang?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Action item number 13 is City of Dubuque Data Center and Information Technology Department Ribbon Cutting Video.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
I move that we receive and file and view the video.
Second by Sprang.
Motion by Farber, second by Sprang. Felicia, go ahead and roll the video, please.
I'm Brad Kavanaugh, serve as the mayor here in Dubuque, and we're very excited to have the ribbon cutting this morning for the city's new data center and I T offices. Every time I come to these things, I'm just so impressed when I look out in the crowd and I see all the faces of people who are partnering to do these things together in this community. I want you to recognize how special that is. Not everybody can pull that off, and over and over and over again, here in the Dubuque region, we do it.
Dubuque is seen as a creative, innovative I T role model. Our best use cases for our data center and other A I applications are frequently referenced by others throughout the nation. This small but nimble Tier 3 data center is a significant achievement, one that the city and our residents should take note and pride. It leverages technological advances for Dubuque's benefit, assures public safety, safeguards sensitive personal and city data, and protects critical systems from cyber and other risk.
When you look at the new data center, you think, what's the county have to do with this? But you have to go back several years to see how working together has got us to this point. When they started talking about a new 911 center or P S A, partnership between Dubuque Initiatives, the city, and the county, we were able to secure some space here. We now have our new public safety answering point under construction.
This data center is an example of the attributes that Dubuque Initiatives brings to this community, the value of partnerships and collaboration where everyone plays a role.
Redundancy, cybersecurity, and data protection have always been at the forefront of the Information Technology Department mission. This new data center is a continuation of those efforts, especially with regards to redundancy. A redundant data center ensures reliability and safeguarding against failures, ensuring maximum uptime for staff and citizens. We are proud to call this building our new home. Three weeks ago, we moved our production equipment out of the basement of, like Brad said, an old funeral home that was built in 1880 to this modern building. Our equipment is now out of a floodplain. This move gives us the peace of mind that our equipment and data are protected better than ever. With our new 1,000-square-foot Tier 3 data center, our production site is now miles away from our disaster recovery site instead of a few blocks away. This minimizes the risk of both locations being affected by a natural disaster or widespread outage. So there is plenty of additional space for expansion for ourselves, local businesses, or organizations that may wish to lease space from us. We have 100 kilowatt electrical load capacity, multiple internet service provider connections, multiple paths of fiber, a whole room battery backup, three new efficient cooling units, a new fire suppression system, and a generator big enough to run the entire building. When funding is available for Phase 2, we will have even greater capacity and redundancy. The staff of the city of Dubuque and its citizens can be assured that the data and equipment that is crucial to city daily operations is protected and safe.
Yet another great video for another great event. Thank you very much for everyone who was able to be there and join us for that, and also to Felicia and Eric and team for creating that video. All right. Motion there was to receive and file and watch that, so Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Sprang?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Next, our council member reports.
What have we been up to?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
A little slower than a normal two-week period in between council meetings, but a number of us, Tuesday, the 22nd, were at the New Horizon Academy Ribbon Cutting, and all I can say is, wow, what a facility, what a difference that's going to make in the lives of a bunch of young people and a bunch of working people that are trying to figure out how to manage kids and careers and life altogether. This is just a tremendous addition to downtown Dubuque, so kudos to Cottingham and Butler for dreaming it up and making it happen. That was pretty hot stuff. Thursday, the 31st, I got to watch the livestream with the Telegraph Herald announcing the Rising Star, Dubuque Rising Stars for 2025, and not unsurprisingly, it included our own Antonio Mousan. Definitely a rising star. We knew it already, but it's nice that they recognized that as well. I took a lengthy walking tour with former state representative Chuck Eisenhardt of what he called the headwaters of the Kaufman River, and looked at some of the locations where maybe we could make some up-the-river or up-the-hill improvements, particularly runoff coming from our own bunker hill. We talked about stormwater management, we need to talk about our own house first, or at least simultaneous to the other things going on in the community. It was pretty obvious to see that a lot of water comes down there and ends up on the street in Kaufman, and a little bit on the west side as well. But it was an interesting walk, and got a greater appreciation of what the folks down the hill a little bit are putting up with and where a good chunk of it's coming from. He understands, I understands, the neighbors we talk to understand that Kaufman was constructed way before it ever rained like this. And, you know, I call it climate change, call it worldwide climate disruption, call it whatever you want, the weather has changed, and we're having more frequent and serious rain events in our community that are impacting everything from riverboat traffic to livability on some of those Dubuque hillsides. Friday night, I was proud to host some of my Mensa group in Dubuque. They came from Illinois, they came from Southern Iowa, and they came to Dubuque to check out Art on the River. And I offered them a choice of restaurants. Last time they came up, we went to Mario's, and they said, we got to go to Mario's again. So we did, and that worked out. So thank you, Mario's, thank you, Art on the River, thank you, all the artists that presented the fine art there. That was a great evening. David presented some fantastic music, as he always does, and there was just so much going on down there. It was pretty hard to get bored. What a beautiful night weather was. That's what I've been up to, and a lot of you were up to most of those same things.
Thanks, Mr. Jones. Mr. Sprang?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, since the last time we met, I've attended my D R A board meeting, had an evening dinner with the new D R A board, or the new Anthony, so that was nice. And then I know Saturday, a number of us were at the Miracle League where we got to play a nice couple of games with those kids. And then I know Centrally Rooted had a wonderful kind of open house to kind of get the neighborhood together, and that was a really nice, hot Tuesday night, but a really good evening. I spoke at the Art on the River event as well, and then this whole weekend, I was down at Dubuque Fest, just between my, the organization that I'm involved with, as well as helping them tear down, so. And then there's a whole bunch of other things I got planned this upcoming couple of weeks, so. But when people say there's nothing to do in this town, there's always something to do.
Ms. Farber.
Yeah, so I just wanted to give a shout out to the Miracle League for what a fun morning that was. In spite of the weather, we went inside Hempstens Gymnasium and actually played ball with their all-stars and our city council stars, of which we are four members here. It was just a lot of fun, but most importantly, the smiles of the kids that were our competitors who won our match, by the way. They won our game. It was just so much fun, and it was just so heart touching, and the families were just so pleased to have their family members there to support those that played against us. So it was just, it was a wonderful event, and I encourage everybody, if they have an opportunity, to go to one of the games at the Miracle League, and they are, they have games throughout the summer, by the way, there. And then this past week, I also attended the F C C Quarterly Update, which was a virtual meeting where we learned about the chair, Carr, who's a new chair in the last six months, and what his projects are and his focus will be. And for the committee I'm on, which is the Intergovernmental Agency Committee, we will be looking at our next project probably in the next week or so, and I'll be happy to report back. And again, always happy to represent Dubuque, as the only Iowa member of that committee, so it's very important that we keep helping with the project development there, so, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Russell.
Thanks. I had the opportunity to work in the token booth for the Dubuque Main Street for Farmer's Market on a rainy, rainy Saturday morning, and all the adults were running around with their umbrellas, and, but they were still there, and the kids were having a great time in all the puddles, splashing and squealing and enjoying the rain, so I guess sometimes your perspective changes as you're, as you get older, but maybe we should go back to the play in the puddles. It was great fun.
Thanks, Ms. Russell. Ms. Wethel?
On July 23rd, Dubuque Museum of Art held their annual meeting in what will be their new temporary home at the DuPaco Voices Building. And so as they transition in preparation to create their new space, they'll be located there, and the construction has been fantastic. Community partners have been a big part of that in getting it done, but excited for their new, their new journey. Miracle League also want to call out our Dubuque Police Department and Dubuque Fire, who were there for other games. They might have performed a little bit more athletically than me personally, not speaking about my fellow council members. And then I wanted to share, on Thursday, July 31st, from 1:00 to 5:00 AM, I joined Community Solutions of Eastern Iowa and East Central Intergovernmental Association for the Point in Time, or PIT count, and the Housing Inventory Count, or H I C. The Housing Inventory Count is a count that looks at those that are currently within shelters, whereas the time, a Point in Time count, looks at those who are living outdoors. These two crucial components of the data collection are used by continuum of care to provide HUD data and better understanding of those who are unhoused for creating effective interventions. As a healthcare provider, social determinants of health, such as shelter, are crucial to wellness. In my own personal moral beliefs and in my own faith, I believe in the dignity of a human being. We identified 53 individuals outdoors that night. This is the largest area count by more than 20 people on previous counts. I'm grateful to the dynamic team, including Dubuque P D for their part in the night and allowing me to join them. It was a deeply moving experience and one that I hope to participate in in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Wethel. Yeah, Mr. Resnick?
Briefly, thank you. I just want to comment one more time on the Art on the River. I wanted to send a shout out to the senior high school students who are in the drama department. They had some excellent presentations and some singing, and their director, Mr. Aaron Dean, was there to support them. So, and O V G did a great job, and it was a beautiful night, so that was fantastic. Thank you for the remarks, Mr. Sprang. Also, there is, I want to just alert the council that maybe you already know that there's some escalator issues, but it wasn't working, hasn't been working, but with some conversations, I did find out that there is, you know, it is a matter of intense conversation and strategizing, so they're on it, but it will be probably be coming, coming before us pretty soon with some proposed solutions. So, but that was a great event. I appreciate especially the students and the directors. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Jones?
Let me just throw a footnote in about what the council's up to next week. If you agree with their bosses or not, the congressional staffers, the folks that work in the D C offices of our two senators and our state, and our representative, are the glue that holds Washington and, in fact, the United States together. And they're the ones that are coming here to Dubuque to hang out with us for three days this week, and we're going to drag them all over the place and show them things that they helped happen, things that we need their help to make happen, and they're the reason that the world goes round, in all honesty. They're some of the most dedicated, hardworking people in government, and we're going to be glad to host them here and look forward to spending some time with them.
Yeah, it's great that we get the chance to do that annually. Wow, thank you for the updates, that's a lot. Yeah, I will just add a couple of things. First of all, looking forward, tomorrow night, National Night Out, so making sure that we can join the police department and fire department, everybody else who shows up for the National Night Out, so I hope everybody gets a chance to do that. We had the county fair. County fair happened. Ms. Wethel and I were able to be there for the opening ceremonies, which I really appreciate that we get that invitation every single year, and we're able to go and be there and join with other mayors, other council members. Representative Lundgren's always there, being the former fair manager, and, you know, it's always a good time to be able to, first of all, lose 20 pounds through sweating when you're standing on the stage, and then also just to be able to be there to really be excited about the fair, and you just see, you know, kind of goes back to the pure joy